I feel bad that it took one situation to get everybody here, but I encourage you to always come to our city council, city workshops. That way when something does come up, we won't have to worry about somebody not knowing about it. This time if all will please stand, we'll ask the mayor, if he would remain in his position, remain standing. We want the council to report to the ladies and the gentlemen.
Father, we are here today for this is the day that the Lord has been. We thank you for these citizens who have turned out tonight. We pray that equality and the members of the board would just hear what we have to say tonight, God. And we pray, God, that you continue to bless this community. In Jesus' name we thank you, in Jesus' name we pray, and in God's name, amen.
Amen.
So the place of the flag, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm filming it for me.
What call? Darien City Council meeting, there were six things this time. First item I want to do is roll call, everyone present. I appreciate everyone for coming tonight. Next item, order of business, the approval of agenda, we've all had a chance to let go of the agenda. Do I hear a motion that we approve with a print, salute, second? I have a motion by Councilman Cox, backed by Councilman Loxton, any discussions? Any comments, discussions? All in favor is right hand, pose thank you, carry it, thank you. Next item, the approval of the minutes of our previous minutes, that's January 19th regular meeting. Do I hear a motion that we approved the minutes from our previous meeting as printed?
Move.
I have a motion of counsel from Loxton, I hear a second.
Second.
Backed by councilman Cox, any discussions, comments? Any discussions? All in favor is your right hand, carry it, thank you. City manager, am I correct, there's no public hearings tonight?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Next item on agenda, under item C, number five, unfinished business, consider application for abandonment of Roger Longston for a portion of Jackson Street located between Seventh Street and Eighth Street, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion of the motion closing home and getting action for consideration of this item until Mr. Longston and the owners of BMJ's reach an agreement for parking so that this proposal of abandonment would not have a negative impact on the restaurant.
Okay, I have a motion by councilman Clark to us for postponement of it. And do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, maybe not for us to know whether or not postponement is agreeable to the applicant, to the gathering, contract between the city and the applicant, it's still getting to work, so.
Okay, let's make sure everybody understood the motion to back it. So what the motion was, was to postpone any hearings or action or anything else with this event until the applicant, which would be Mr. Longston, produces a, an agreement that had been reached with the owners of BMJ's, that the particular road closure would not have a negative impact. So if that motion carries, then this item will not come back unless that had been reached.
Okay. Okay, with that, I know Mr. Longston's not here, but he represents my children. I think I've seen him, Mr. Children, are you okay with this, postponement of this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, there isn't for any more discussion on it, so the, uh, our actions tonight, we will not take any action on it tonight on the consideration of pretty abandonment, correct on that? City attorney?
Yes. The thing to make efficient, we still have to go through the motion, am I correct?
If you have any other discussion, then we still have discussion. Okay, so, uh, any more discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a discussion on that. If we look at our minutes from the last meeting which we approved, if you look at the minutes, this, I don't know what happened, so let me clarify that, it should not even be an action item. I mean, we don't have to get into why it is here, but it should not have even been an action item. Because it was a recommendation from our esteemed colleague, Councilman Cox. And, uh, and from him, uh, that, uh, we don't even act on this thing until we get the proper paperwork. So some way, somehow, things were changed. If you look at your minutes, you would see that, and I second it, so I'm guilty too. If you want to look at unfinished business, uh, B. Motion was made by Councilman Cox, second by Loxton, to consider the application for abandonment of this street attorney. Paperwork, A. Proper agreement for presentation to the council. Motion carried unanimously. So what I'm saying, we should have, unless the attorney have those documents ready, this should not even be on the agenda. If I mistake it, please correct me.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor of postponement?
For clarification purposes, this being come back up until there's a written agreement between those parties, is that correct?
According to the motion, this item will not come back before the city council until
There's a written agreement.
There's an agreement between Mr. Longston, the owners of BMJ's, and that particular road closure, if it comes back, would have no negative impact on the business. So the council is saying we won't consider
Everybody was clear.
We won't consider unless something has been reached between those two parties.
Thank you.
Any more discussion or comments, is everybody clear?
Now, I do have one other comment, because I know when we leave, we've got a full house now. Attorney, the mayor, uh, the manager, will make it much clearer than I can myself. Sounds like what I'm saying, please correct me, that this is going to be tabled, but for the public, this simply means that when they bring it back, it doesn't mean we can agree to it or disagree. But I want to make it plain, it stops here. We will make the decision to close it or keep it open. And so everyone would know that when it comes back, that, and it will come back, that it's left up to this council. And I'm not sure that individuals out there, so I think I've said it kind of muddy, but maybe the attorney, or the mayor, or the manager can make it clear.
That's pretty clear, we're not going to take any action on it tonight. But when agreement is reached and it comes back, then we would, it would be a good discussion, correct?
Well, there's no guarantee that it would come back, but if it does come back, it has to meet all the requirements that have been set for it so far. The newest requirement would be that an agreement is reached between the two parties so that parking or any other issues would not adversely affect the restaurant. So that's the motion, and if it comes, I mean, that won't have to be overcame before you would consider again.
Any more comments, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would add to that, that at your high speed, you indicated that they have to come to the terms of the city in agreement, so there's clearly two agreements they have to have before they can bring this thing back to business.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Opposed, same. Oh, okay. All in favor? Okay. Next item on the agenda, under new business, consider intergovernmental agreement with McIntosh County for 2016 Splot referendum, and we will take action on that tonight. Do I hear a motion? Consider intergovernmental agreement with McIntosh County for 2016 Splot referendum, and we ask the city manager, if he will, Loxton, a little bit on that.
I would like to introduce the item, Mr. Mayor. I think everybody's aware by now, and, uh, here? Alright, there we have it. The current Splot expires at the end of September of this year, and state law requires that a new Splot be voted on by the citizens of the county. And the date for that election would be May 24th. You have to have 90 days between when the county calls for the referendum and the previous date that it can be placed on ballot. So that timeline, along with the other considerations, if the voters approve the act, not having a gap between one tax cycle and the next, really circles the date, the May 24th. So at the county commission's last meeting, they called for the referendum, approved an intergovernmental agreement with the development authority, and now have approved an intergovernmental agreement with the city. And that, you have that before you. That intergovernmental agreement would approve of the city's portion of the Splot and would approve the project list thereof. You don't have to have an intergovernmental agreement by law, but it's a good, it's good to have one. But there's a lot of different reasons for that. It provides usually more funding to municipalities, and it does provide a sixth year. Splot by law is a five-year tax, however, if the county can reach agreements with all the municipalities, the tax can run for a sixth year before appearing back on the ballot or a vote. So we talked a little bit last night about some of the, some of the projects, which I think the, the major project in this particular Splot would be Recreation Complex. I know there'll be a lot of that in the Darien news. I think the city would have interest in this as well. The county has just approved a contract to purchase the Cafe Risque. I think that's good for the entire community. I can state today that the other party has signed that contract, and we expect to be closed within 14 days. That's been identified as a visitor center, and funds have been authorized to do that. So that's a really good development for the city and county, getting our gateway into the community. Both of those are, of course, funded by Splot. I think that's probably all that I present right now, of course, will be glad to answer any questions, but intergovernmental agreement is the funding mechanism that enables you to receive the tax that sets forth all the terms of which it's distributed.
And it is, uh, 80/20, is that correct?
Yeah, the distribution of 2010 Splot was 80/20, and the proposed distribution for the 2016 Splot would be 80/20 as well.
What was last, last, uh, the last Splot we had?
Uh, we, the city got 5% before that, because the county had countywide projects. We tried, but the county has not done that this time. So it's 20%, but for the current Splot, it's 20%. And the Splot before that was like 5.6% because the county had countywide projects that get funded off the top before municipalities receive the new funds. We didn't, the county did not do that this time.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we consider intergovernmental agreement with the county for 2016 Splot referendum?
Mr. Mayor, I have a very common, uh, that most of the intergovernmental agreement on the use and distribution of proceeds from the 2016 Splot.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Clark, a second?
Second.
Backed by Councilman Cox, any discussion or comments?
Uh, discussion in our workshop yesterday. I'm for it, 100%. There was some discussion to find out if there was any room to increase, and I think a comfortable figure came up, instead of the usual 20%, I have 30% for the city. But I think a compromise would say if we could find out if there's any kind of way that could be another 5%, which would be 25%. If we could check into that, find out whether that's something or not. I'm not learned in that area, and I have not done the research to see what other cities and counties can do. However, I take advantage of our manager's word, which is true, we can negotiate anything we want. We may not get it. And thinking in discussion, we were talking about, it's a county Splot, and they could offer lower. And, uh, so we, we understand that. But I'm hopeful that we might could see if there's any kind of way we can get 25% before we so easily agree with 20%. I don't think we've ever negotiated for higher.
I'd like to have 50% or so. Let's go ahead, and I'll be off again, that's a great point. But I haven't talked to around the different things, and I have looked at this right here. And, uh, I know our county chairman, Mr. Kelly Spretz, here, and I want to thank her, and all because one I'm looking at, if you went by the way to state laded out, we'd be down around 12 or 13%. And we looked at 16% more than we got last time, so if you, well, we're going to let the city manager do it, then we'll be back.
Do we take a comment first?
Yeah, no, you do.
I mean, we're all for negotiating, however, before you negotiate, let me make you aware of a few things, right? Because you need to be aware of them. I think that, uh, I think that, um, what Councilman Loxton was reverting to is, you know, we should try to get more. I would have to, this is the only fear I would have from the city standpoint, would be that, let's say that you didn't approve this tonight, and you approved 25%, whatever you felt like you wanted. The way the law is constructed, it's not very beneficial for the city. So what happens is, if an intergovernmental agreement is not reached between the city and county, not only does it revert back to population, which the mayor referred to, which is actually 30%, but it allows the county to fund all of its year one, all of its year one priorities before that distribution kicks in. So basically, um, you're, you're, basically, if you didn't approve it, you could get 11%. So I just want you to understand that, is that, that when you negotiate, you have to understand where the pendulum can swing to. And by law, if you don't reach an intergovernmental agreement, then automatically you go to population. The population kicks in after all the level one projects are done by the county. I ran the numbers on that, there's $1.3 million in countywide projects. And then when you became eligible to receive it based on population, if you didn't reach an agreement, you'd be receiving 11%, which would effectively cut the Splot in half. So just be aware of that if you are going to try to negotiate. I don't, I don't want you to negotiate without knowing the other side. So that's, I mean, that's why we, we thought it was a fair agreement, 20%. But I think it could have, it could have been 11, 13, or 14. It may not be as much as you want, but it's not, it's, uh, state law would allow it to be a lot less.
Captain Clark?
I'll be basically answering my question, I have time for my own other statement. Of course, we're on a timeline on this, we need to go ahead and do this tonight, so that it's a done deal. Mr. Mayor, city attorney, some.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify that, uh, in concert with what, what Councilman Clark said, we're on a timeline here, we will have to, if there's negotiation, there is any change in percentages, that will have to be done before the county passes this resolution. Because the resolution is what is voted on by the vote. And the resolution would incorporate, of course, this agreement, which says, these many, each project for the county and these projects for the city. So if you're going to move some money from the county to the city, that has to be done before the resolution and before the vote. I, I push you on, but I think you're probably pretty close to it.
Pretty close, thank you. Okay, any more comments, discussions?
Yes. Now, Mayor, seriously, I don't say jokingly, and of course, the comments, I believe, have some, some merit. But we've got a deadline, we've got a deadline, so we have to accept. And the manager's opinion, which I do value his opinion in these areas, where you could get less. Sounds like the city don't have little or no negotiating.
Not a lot of power, not a lot of power with the way, with the way state laws with, not with Splot. In other areas, you did local option sales tax, but the way, the way Splot is, it's a county tax, and it's structured that way. So it's not as advantageous, the city doesn't have a lot of leverage unless you have a lot of population. Because that's the default, is to do it based on population.
Yeah. And that's why I agree with that part, in some cities, in certain areas, the city does more than the county, because of metropolitan, like Atlanta.
And those factors come into consideration with local option sales tax. The other, the other, the other penny, the other 1%, you can consider services. With this, with this opinion, it doesn't consider services. So it just goes strictly to population or whatever you can agree to with an intergovernmental agreement. This intergovernmental agreement is more than you can get based on populations, and my advice would be take the deal. I remember when we got 5%. You know, we, we don't want 5, but we don't want 11 here, I can promise you that. But the goal of everybody should be to try to make that 20% or 80% be more, right? To have more sales, and then that's a, that's one good way to decrease that revenue stream is to have that county have more sales tax.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. More discussion, comments? I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor is your right hand. Opposed, same, carry it, thank you. Next one is going to be a new business, I'd be the center charter member for both Councilman Loxton. This was a discussion, tonight was a discuss, pretty good last night, I was fine hearing everybody come to the workshops as well as the council meetings. Any discussion on the charter, uh, amendment proposed?
Yeah, I'll be very agreed this time, we did discuss it yesterday, but I certainly want to go with those things. It's not an action item, I follow the counsel of my esteemed colleague, Councilman Cox. So we were requesting an action item, but it's not an action item for discussion, for our council to consider for the future of our charter. Number one, and I'll try to go through it as quickly as I can, and condense it, Mr. Mayor. Consider changing the, uh, the charter. The city clerk be selected by the mayor and council. And our form of government, which is a council managed form of government, this is a common practice, but in our practice, the clerk is selected by the manager. So what we have, as I said on yesterday, uh, we are prohibited from directly going to our clerk. Classically, that was that the manager that we have here, and clerk handles all of our legal matters, such as, not all of them legal, but financial matters. And does not even have to consult with the mayor or the council with most of these things. But if we had it, as some cities do, then that clerk will be under the control of the, uh, the mayor and the council, which is a common practice, and we could give many examples. Number two, consider changing or amending the city charter, that the mayor pro term be determined by and selected by the entire council. What we have now with our city council is that this individual is selected by seniority. It's kind of not right in the charter, it says the mayor, and then it says the seniority. So either we can say one or the other. And the mayor doesn't want the responsibility of saying, well, this is who I'm going to select. So the decision is based on that. As it's done in the county, the county docs are writing a different fashion. It is selected by the county government. A person can be elected fresh, just like our county commissioner chair. And she's already the chair now, and she just got elected. We can't do that under our rule. I think the one that we can work toward, which a lot of cities our size do, they rotate that. And that seemed to be more popular. That might be something we want, may want to move to in the future. Where it is now, we do have to make some changes in the charter, because it actually says that the, uh, the mayor pro term acts as the presider. So we know there's a one word off, but check it out later, as in the absence of the mayor. Then they also say the mayor is the presider, so there's some things that we have to adjust there. Last but not least, and I'll give you the last one, and I'm hoping we will consider, consider changing the charter to make up a form. And I think the citizens, and probably most of us in the council, will agree with this one. We've ran into a mess of massive problem. At one time, as I said on yesterday, our manager contract was agreed with the mayor and to council. Under what we have now, we can't do that. When their heart was elected, something happened, and there was a lot of discussions on, well, we did it before, why we can't do it now? And he is prohibited. And of course, as I said, no one should have that much power, no one. To the point now, that if Councilman Cox is out, and if I get sick and have to leave, the meeting is over with. Or if someone else is out, and I pick on myself, I will be the dominant force. And if not me, any other council person can sway the meeting to say whether we have a city meeting or not. Because if we don't have a forum, it's council. I'd like to see it move back to mayor, because the mayor we have now cannot miss one meeting. The mayor and any two council person that can be here, that the progress of the city can go forward. The way it is now, ladies and gentlemen, any two council members sitting up here, any given moment, I want to be clear, right now, all we have to do is leave, sickness, death, whatever, the meeting shut down. So I'm thinking, yeah, when we see things do happen. So what I'm saying is that I think if not all of these things, some of these things we need to address in 2016. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any more comments, discussions? Comments, discussions? Next item, the consider special condition for 2016 blessing of the police festival. I want to thank Mr. Mandic for coming last night and giving us a little detail on it and enlightenment on it. City manager, would you like, anything you'd like to bring up on that?
Yeah, just introducing, Mr. Mayor. This is the special consideration, the, the special conditions that are attached to their permit application. I reviewed the application, have approved it, everything looks in order. We do a good job, and we know exactly where things are going to be, not a lot of changes. However, one of the requirements that we actually codify by ordinance is that if anyone is asking to use city right of way or space, that they have to have permission, especially if there's going to be a charge of admission. So that's what the special conditions that we're considering, that my office doesn't have the authority to issue, comes before the government authority. So what those special conditions are, A, that you allow city property to be fenced off, and B, that you allow for those two days, an admission fee to be charged. And those would be the special conditions for the 2016 blessing of the festival.
Okay. Any comments, discussions, questions? Any discussions? Do I hear a motion that we consider special condition for 2016 blessing of the police festival? I have a motion by Councilor Shawke, I have a second by Councilman Loxton. Now, is there any discussion or comments, if I was to sit on? All in favor is your right hand? Opposed, same, carry it. Now, just, uh, for our minor side, on this right here, city manager, you made a comment that if someone's going to use a street, and they're going to charge on it, if you have it done before, council.
That's right, if they're going to use right of way for a festival or an event, it has to be approved by council, especially if they're going to put a gate up and things of that nature. So that's the mechanism for getting approved.
What about if someone's going to have a parade and you charge the citizens, putting their folks in the parade?
If they're putting folks in the parade, um,
They're using the street, blocking the street, offering the charging.
So what you're asking, are, are parades exempted?
Yep, because they're blocking the street, using the street, paying charges, admission.
Well, they still get, they still go through the application process, so give me, I don't know which parade you're thinking of, for example, MLK parade, they still get a permit.
Only any parade.
They still go through the process.
Okay.
But in that case, no, we do not, we do not require them to get permission that they're using the road and they're not installing a gate. It's really about the installation of the gate and prohibiting citizens from getting somewhere.
But what I'm saying, we got a parade, you can't go, you can't use that road to the parade, so we've stopped. Just want to make sure everything is done properly.
That's the interpretation that we've used in the past. You can review the ordinance and see if you agree with that, would like to remedy it, but we've not treated those as a special condition. We've treated that as being a part of the permit, we're not requiring, because they didn't erect a fence to prohibit them.
Okay, got one more thing, and, uh, pertains to the busting of the police festival. And I need to take a bite last night, have to take it for today. When they charge these vendors to come inside the fence to sell their items and their baked cells and whatever, I've had numerous people tell me, they don't think it's right for anybody else to be able to just sit up outside the fence. Is there any way, is there any permit that they would have to give? Is there any way, is there any permit that they would have to get to set up outside the fence because if, what I'm getting at is, I wonder vendors set up there, if you can set up outside a fence free of charge, why should they have to pay to go inside the fence?
Uh, well, I mean theoretically, right, anybody can sell products or goods anywhere in the city of Darien, if they're on commercial, if they're on property, they have the permission of the property owner and if they have peddler's license. Now, I don't know what the fees are for the blessing, I don't know what they charge to the vendor, the fees for a peddler's license is twenty-five dollars a day. What you will find is, um, generally speaking, you do not enforce the peddler's license during the blessing of the fleet, very similar to, we do not enforce, the, uh, the Department of Health does not enforce food codes during those times either, inspecting vendors. So what I would say is, um, you know, be careful with that because I would say at least half of those setting up outside are usually nonprofits and churches. And if you're going to fold those, I mean, you know, think about everybody that you're folding in there, but generally speaking, the mentality that I've seen from this community is during the blessing, everybody seems to say, all right, for this weekend, you know, we're gonna be really, really, we're gonna be lax with the issuance of peddler's license. That seems to be historically the way it is. If somebody wants a preferred spot, you know, they, they go in there, but, but anyone can get a peddler's license and set up anywhere, you get them in that regard.
Um, just, um, after what the manager's saying, is this true about the preferred spot inside and as, as opposed to the outside? And if it's the churches that usually do the selling on the outside and like you said, first time for a serve? So usually you're there to get the spot, or you think that's what, spot you get, but if you want a preferred and know that it's a curve, you don't sign it.
Okay, I mean, we, we have a history of allowing a lot of churches and nonprofits to try to prosper off of all the crowds coming in, so, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want us to, to hinder that, but it's certainly something you can do. I mean, you could increase the peddler's license fee to try to encourage people to be located within, but you're still gonna probably have some people on the outside.
Next item, the, uh, Councilman Ford, gonna start off with Councilor Shockey.
I'd love to, to be for, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ford?
Yes, I, I do have a report, uh, talked with, uh, today, the gentleman from the Greenway, so hopefully a bit of a good news, I talked with Manny briefly about it. He's the regional director and it's, I think it's the, is it seventy, is it fiftieth anniversary? I can't remember exactly, they, they want to plan something which is fascinating, he's out of Florida and there's local Greenway here, but, uh, for whatever reason, they are looking at Darien and McIntosh County, uh, for the scenic bike, uh, tours that come through. So they are seriously looking at trying to do it here, lodging here and bikers will be here for a while. I think they stopped at the Trailhead Center once and now they're thinking about Sapporo and some of our living quarters that's right here and, and, and Darien. So for whatever reason, they called me and asked me what I worked with that and I reached a volunteer and hopefully what I do, Mr. Mayor, is bring a report back if it's, you know, society coming through, they talk in November, December or January. And if one works, then they'll bring it again. Uh, other report is, is the fact that I sit on city council and there's been a lot of things in the media on me as a city councilman. I had one of my friends that stopped me and kind of looked confused and a little bit sad and he thought I was going to jail. And, uh, but on a very serious note, uh, I've been in the media, seem like more than the people that's running for office and it's very troubling to me because, as I said before, and this is the last meeting before the election that's coming up. And as I said, I don't think there's a one in here that would allow anybody to attack their family. And, uh, I've had folks wanting to do lawsuits now because of that. And it's troubling to my, uh, my daughter, she worked with the general for trade, so this could affect her career in the military. But a lot of false accusations went out and I just want to set the, set the record straight. We have the media here today and I do have some documentation that I can give you, uh, and I just want to set the record straight. They've been digging every corner they can in my record. Some are in the room right now and, uh, but I'm not calling any names, Mr. Mayor, so don't hesitate, I'm not gonna do that. But I hope that the next generation of elected officials will do better than the ones that we have now. There were allegations that I was going to fire the chief of police. So the citizens would know, I don't have that kind of power, number one, I'm only one vote. So these are vicious rumors and gossip, bigotry and hatred and even racism occurred. I've been working with the Martin Luther King Day Parade for nearly thirty years and I was brutally attacked during the Martin Luther King Day Parade and I smiled, I said, no, I'm working, get in the back of the line. This is terrible, this is two, this is the twenty-first century and this just didn't happen to regular people, these people are running for office and some in office. We cannot do that. I've never attacked anyone's family. I've had GBI's, uh, investigation and they searched every corner they could on me. They tried to record it off, they were giving false back information and I have things on the media here now, from the GBI. I have things here from the state of Georgia and including the Attorney General's office actually suggesting that I continue to pursue the stuff that's happening to me and my family. And I have all this away, I'm gonna give it to the media. We don't need to do this. I'm saying this because I'm angry, I'm upset, weak, all of us want to win our elections, but there's no need to brutally attacking and bringing up racial issues. You should read the propaganda that's out there and I'll give it to you. So all I'm saying that the next generation of people that's running for office, uh, and I hope if I ever run again, that I don't attack anyone's family. I've got records that's in the courthouse forever because of people spreading this false propaganda on my family. This needs to stop. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cox?
I agree. Um, I want to thank the blessing of the fleet committee and all of our chairs for all the hard work they do each and every year, make Darien shine and all they do and I really do appreciate that. Um, also want to thank our local, uh, police patrol, they do, it's beat up patrol, who have some tires that have gotten slashed in some neighborhoods and I know that they are riding the streets a lot more and I would thank you for patrolling the city more than ever they were. And I also, um, want to thank the public for turning out tonight and following our attention to something we like to mess. We too are human and sometimes we need the public outcry and foot to, to let us know that we're messing up and I appreciate everybody that took time to show up tonight. That's included as mine, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Cat, Councilman Clark, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in a lot of northern cities, small towns, they have, uh, uh, public voting and the town members turn out and actually vote for the election and that then, basically turns out to be completely democratic that way. We have a Republican, the law, Republican, former government, we represent the people, but it's good when people do come out, do pick up, do call, uh, I had phone calls this afternoon, Baltimore phone call, had some emails on the subject and, and we listen to the people and so that, that's good. I walked out, I joined the mayor and the cops and, and, uh, congratulating the people, uh, giving us input into, uh, what's going on on the council. Um, you know, I'm not, he's not the only one who's been attacked in GBI and false allegations made, somebody else is turning in false allegations on me, so don't say, don't think you're the only one.
Okay. I, I agree with, say, I feel like I was, myself and my family was even attacked and I wasn't even, wasn't even in there recently. But anyway, uh, again, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Jackson.
Now I'm telling you all the things that have been discussed, not everything that'll be out there, I wish all that would be out there, it'll depend on money, so this is a type of facility that I think is, would be really, really good for all the citizens of McIntosh County and also good for elderly and elderly people as well. I know that I've always found it to be kind of hard to believe that there's not a track or somewhere for people to go and exercise and walk and run, so, you know, I am, I am glad of that. But it is in the planning stages, you're, if, if the voters do approve this, you're probably still, you're three years away from construction, but it would, it would start in this next floss, so we'll be providing a lot of information to the Darien youth so the voters can be informed and make a decision that's a fit. That would conclude all the, uh, would conclude my report, but I would just also mention that you reminded me again on Pine Street, I did look, um, we have, we do have a street that's gonna be getting resurfaced in the next couple of months, so, um, that'd be a good time to re, to strip Pine Street as well, since I'll have another one getting striped. So I did check the, uh, the line item for that and we do have funds, well, based on what I'm estimating, we have funds to resupply it unless the, unless the pricing went up double in the last six months, I think we'll be okay. That concludes my report.
Also, we are, uh, working on, I know a lot, a lot of people complained about the lighting in the city, we are working on, on trying to get a square base under the lighting, so kind of bear with us. City attorney?
No, of course not, Mayor.
Being on correct to, uh, we got no decisions, right? Okay, I would like also bringing up is, uh, uh, we gave the city employees their Christmas bonus and each one of them took time to sign a card to let us know how much they did appreciate that, so let everybody know that they did, tell you thank you. Any more? Guns? I hear we're motion, we're adjourned. So move, I hear a second. Appreciate everybody come.